Yeah, okay, so we'll open the meeting. It's 5 o'clock. Everyone's here. First thing on the agenda is a discussion in executive session. So I will make the following motion that we will enter an executive session in the town administrator's office pursuant to general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21 regarding Morse Brothers versus the town of Halifax pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position, which it does. Secondly, Local 239 Halifax Association of Patrol Officers pursuant to general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if a open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and its sus. And finally, Labor Council Contract pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Do I have a second?
Yeah, and then just the executive session minutes.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Yep, the executive session minutes.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. We will come back in as soon as we're done and take up the rest of the agenda. Okay, we'll come back into public session. Couple of things from executive session that I would just like to mention. On our agenda, we have a grievance from the Halifax Association of Patrol Officers. We're not going to be dealing with that tonight. But I will say that the Board has discussed the Morse Brothers lawsuit. Just to remind everyone that the Superior Court found in favor of Morse Brothers. And so we have asked our town council to file an appeal, which would be done, I think, in the next day or so. And then we'll see what happens after that. So that will be, that's not ended yet. All right. Let's see, we have a 6 o'clock appointment, so let's go. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, my mistake.
We have a question about the Morse Brothers. Did we sign in an appeal?
What?
Did we sign in an appeal?
That's what John just said.
You just said that.
We couldn't hear you. Yeah, so you sent in an appeal?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, where's the flag? Is it here?
Right over here.
Somebody point to the flag? Thank you.
If you join me in the pledge of allegiance, I apologize. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, going into our regular agenda, again, we have a 6 o'clock meeting with the Finance Committee and then a 6:45 meeting with Mark Chetwind. I hope I'm not saying that wrong. So before we get to that, let's do the warrants and commitments.
I move to a firm approval of the following warrant and commitments. Payroll warrant number 67 for $464,829.57. Vendor warrant number 68 for $122,554.31. Withholding warrant number 69 for $148,693.37. Vendor warrant number 70 for $233,598.3. School warrant number 71 for $381,686.2. Ambulance commitments, January 13, 2025 through January 19, 2025, for $29,146.90. Ambulance commitments, 1/20/25 through 1/26/2025, for $20,510.60. And ambulance commitments, 1/27/25 through 2/2/2025, for $53,770.70.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
I move to approve the following warrant and commitments. Payroll warrant number 72 for $457,168.11. Vendor warrant number 73 for $80,726.76. Withholding warrant number 74 for $158,751.4. And mobile home park fee number 2 for $5,160.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, selectmen minutes from January?
They're not ready yet.
Not ready? Oh, okay, so let's skip over that. Yeah, all right. Open the annual and special town meeting warrant. What do you say, Cody?
Yes, so per the schedule that the Board previously approved, you will vote to open the annual and special town meeting warrant tonight with it to close on March 11th. So any citizen petitioned articles would be due to the town clerk on March 11th for her to certify. We'll post all that information on our website tonight as long as the Board votes to open the warrant.
Okay, they both will close at, on March 11th?
Correct.
All right, so I will make a motion to open the annual and special town meeting warrant for this year with it to close on March 11th, 2025. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mary Gravenese isn't here, I don't think.
No, we figured the Board is well aware of Mary. She serves in several capacities. So she had submitted this application to serve on the Veteran Services Committee. I think she's already pretty actively involved in probably, really.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I see our Veterans Officer in the back there, Steve. Come on up.
Good evening, Steve Littlefield, 15 Franklin Street, NVO. Like Cody said, I'm sure you guys are all aware of Mary's involvement. She's been one of our biggest supporters. And as we move forward to get this committee going and getting some meetings happening in the near future, I could think of nobody better than Mary to be on that committee.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from the Board?
No, he hit the nail on the head. It's a perfect fit.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion gladly to appoint Mary Gravenese as the, an appointment to the Veterans Service Committee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Pedestrian crossing over at Thorne Dyke?
Yes, so the, Dave Eastridge from Thorne Dyke Development is here for any specific questions, but this is for the approval of the location of the crosswalk. It connects the two sidewalks there, from one side of the road to the other. The Traffic Safety Committee previously met and recommended this for approval. So this is just a formal process of approving that. I'll let Dave provide a brief explanation.
Good evening, David Eastridge, Thorne Dyke Development.
Good evening.
So here seeking approval of the crosswalk to connect 266 and 265 on Ponsett Street. So this is actually a requirement of the MDA that we install this crosswalk. So this was designed by our, by Chappelle Engineering, our traffic engineer. It was vetted by the Public Safety Committee as part of the planning board process. So we're actually just seeking, you know, formal approval of this crosswalk. It has a button activated signalization with the strobe lights, you know, as requested, advance warning signs in each direction about 125 feet in advance of the crosswalk. And that's about it.
Okay. We have to make a decision to approve this?
Correct, yeah, it's the formality of it.
All right, any questions from the Board?
Dave, just really quick, and it's probably in here, forgive me, is this solar powered or hardwired or what's, what's the electricity here?
They're both solar powered and they have a transmitter between them.
Okay.
So that obviously when you press button on one side, the lights flash.
Okay. Okay, seeing no indication of any further discussion, we have a motion to approve the pedestrian crosswalk. I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion from the Board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Very good job. All right, Halifax Pride use of town green.
Yes, so there's a request, as has been done in the past few years, for Halifax Pride for use of the town green. It's the fifth annual Halifax Pride celebration. This is for June 8th, I believe it is.
June 8th.
Yeah, June 8th, from, let's see, 11 to 3. And they also have a live entertainment request here. Looks like it's been signed off on by police, fire, and Board of Health. They are aware of all the detail that'll be required in Board of Health permits.
By the way, they didn't ask for a rain date?
No, they didn't.
They did not, correct.
Last year got rained on pretty good.
No, the year before, right?
Oh, was it the year before?
The year before. Last year was nice.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the use of the town green?
I will make a motion to approve the use of the town green for the Halifax Pride event scheduled for June 8th, 2025.
I'll make a second, I'll second that subject to proper insurance being secured.
Okay, any, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry.
Karen Faver, 66 Cladell Bosworth Road. I know that there was conversation that they used the bathrooms here last year for Pride and that shouldn't be happening.
Is someone here from Pride?
Someone I think from Pride is in the back.
Oh, yeah, I have a question in the back or an answer?
Hi, Lana Eldridge, 237 River Street. I'm one of the coordinators for Pride and we actually provide porta-potties outside.
Just for changes, if you need to bring costumes?
Up here in the green room. We pay to, we pay to use this room, just like anybody else does who wants to use this space. So we're entitled to it. We're, we're part of town as well, so we pay for it, we're allowed to use it. Any other questions?
Okay. They do, Laura, since you're there, you know that if you're gonna have live music, you're gonna have to ask for a permit?
There is one.
Well, we've done, yeah, the permit's up there as well. And I'll connect with Bob to get all of our Board of Health stuff squared away.
And you have a detailed, police?
We will, yes. This is our fourth year running this, so we're pretty well versed in what we need to get before the event.
Back in the corner over there, back in the corner over there?
Sir, come on up.
Just tell us who you are, please, so we can get it on the record.
John Spader, 59 Firefly Road. Is there any way we could possibly find a different location, not right across from the playground?
The town green is used as a public space and it's available to anybody. We don't, in fact, we probably aren't allowed to discriminate against one group or another because we have it open to everybody. It's either gotta be open to everybody or closed to everybody. And it's used for farmers markets, Boy Scouts, you name it, you know, as long as it's okayed by all the Police Department and everything else, then it's a public space, it has to be used that way.
Just one last question. Do you know what the performance is and what it's rated, so that others know? Do you ask that? Do you know what the performance is?
What the performance is?
Do you know what it's rated, like, is it?
Well, Ms. Eldridge?
Hi, sorry. This is a family-friendly event. So it's family-friendly. It's good for kids, it's good for teenagers, it's good for adults, it's good for elderly. If you, if you have preference and choose not to enjoy the entertainment that we offer, you don't have to come.
I just wanna know if...
Wait, 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 wait. We can't have a debate between the two of you. This is a hearing here and the Board is the one that has to make the decision, so...
Sure.
Let's talk to us.
Sorry.
And then if you have another question, we'll have you talk to us, okay?
What I'm asking is, is, you know, are they being men dressed as women?
I don't know.
Like, do you ask those questions so that people know that it's a good one?
We're, we're, we're trying to get that answered, thank you. Go ahead.
As we have done in the past for the last four years, yes, there is drag performers involved. Again, we've had them every year for the last four years. Nothing has been inappropriate, nothing has been, whatever, whatever words are going to be used, it's, it's family-friendly. And again, if people don't enjoy that kind of entertainment, you don't have to attend the event.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so we voted to open the town green. We also have a live entertainment permit. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the live entertainment permit for the Halifax Pride event for June 8th, 2025.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. MBTA zoning action plan, next thing on the agenda.
Yes, so as you recall, everyone's familiar with the MBTA zoning law that came down from the state previously. We obviously had the deadline of December, the end of 2024, to implement zoning, hence why we had the special town meeting. That was voted down at town meeting. As we know, there was also the Milton lawsuit against the Attorney General. So what came out of that lawsuit was not that the law itself was unconstitutional, but the way that it was implemented with the regulations wasn't the proper process. As a result, the governor filed emergency regulations and those emergency regulations changed the dates for compliance. So you, back in January of 2023, we were required to submit an MBTA action plan, which is basically saying you're going to try to achieve compliance and you give up what, what you're gonna do to achieve that, try to achieve that compliance. Because those regulations were not found to be lawful, the new regulations give us until February 13th to submit a new action plan to achieve that interim compliance. And then you have until July to potentially vote the actual zoning. So it changes the dates. So the decision that the Board needs to make tonight is, do you want to move forward with just an action plan saying that you'll try to achieve compliance?
I can lead off if you want. No, I think that, I think that the town spoke in December. A few extra months in compliance on paper seems good. I think that sends the wrong message to our voting body. Even a couple more months in compliance on paper with no intention of moving forward and no illusions of a change in vote, I would, I would recommend taking no action at this time.
Okay, John, anything?
I think everybody spoke loud and clear in December. That said, I think we have to do what puts Halifax in the best position. So in my opinion, to be in compliance now does not hurt and only help the town. So I would be in for preliminary compliance right now, put it to the vote, and I have a feeling it's gonna be a similar vote that we had in December, so be it. But at least the town will remain in compliance up until that period.
So I'd like to just read what it is that we have to certify. And this is really what's kinda make, make my mind up on it. And it, it's to be signed by our town administrator, which means we'd have to, we'd have to instruct him to do that, because he can't do it otherwise. But it would, he has to certify that it's the full intention of the town administrator to take necessary action to bring any zoning intended, to comply with all requirements of general law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and 760 CMR 72, to a vote of Halifax in the timeframe described in this action plan and to submit a district compliance application to EO HLC no later than July 14th, 2025. That's, that's what they're asking us to instruct our town administrator to do. I'm very uncomfortable with that because I, I think that's putting him in a, in a very bad circumstance. And the reason I say that is I, I've lived in town about, it'll be 40 years in a month. And I've been to town meeting almost every single one of them years. We've never seen that big of a crowd, never, not even close. I've been involved in elections for 40 years and I don't, I remember plenty of elections where we never had that many voters. So it, it seems to me that we have a very strong mandate from our constituents that they don't want us, they don't want the town, I don't say us, they don't want the town to follow the law, frankly. I mean, that's really what it comes right down to. I agree with you that what we had, and been involved in this from the beginning with trying to come up with a plan, the whole, the whole thing. There are ways that we could be in compliance without, I think, causing a problem, but the town's been clear they don't want it. And I, and I just don't think it's appropriate, even for this couple of month period, for us to say to our town administrator, put him in this position of saying, well, I'm, I'm instructed to use my best efforts to bring this along when I know that nobody wants it. And I know, I've been told clearly that nobody wants it. So I, I hate to do this because I know what's gonna happen. I'm sure the Attorney General is gonna call Cody tomorrow, he's already called once, and say, what'd you do? And when we say, well, we're not in compliance, then we are going to be in the crosshairs. I'm sure of it. I'm sure of it. Everybody who voted that way, who wants to keep the MBTA plan out, has got to understand that, that we will be facing litigation from the Attorney General's office. I'm, I'm very sure of that. It's gonna cost us money, we're probably gonna lose. But, you know, the town has the right to make their decisions. That's why we have votes. And if they voted a certain way, that's the way it should ought to be. So, yes, ma'am. Just identify yourself, please, so we can have a record.
Hi, I'm Lauren Laws, 33 Highland Circle. I know I was at the meetings, but I do want the town to know in our extremely difficult budget situation this year, that the school is trying to find creative ways to forge a path forward. And one of those things we're looking at is regionalization. Halifax applied for a grant so that we could study regionalization and we rewarded that grant, but then we quickly had to give it to Kingston because we wouldn't have been eligible for it. So I just want it to be known that in these difficult economic times, that we are also turning away money of ways to find possible ways to have more solutions for our town. So it's kind of a tough situation, but I just wanted to put that out there because part of what we're here tonight is to discuss the school budget, so, but I just wanted to know if we're already feeling the repercussions of it and I just want people to keep that in mind as we discuss the budget tonight and as we look to the future. So, you know, there is money from the state we're getting to try and help improve our school situation. And luckily Kingston was able to take it over.
Thank you. Can I speak to that, Joe?
Yeah, please. To echo that, I think everybody here in this room probably knows how, if we did bring this to vote again, how it's gonna go. I don't think that's, that's a surprise to anybody here. But if you stick around for our budget hearing tonight, you'll see that this is gonna be an extremely challenging year for Halifax. One, a historically tough year for this town. So I feel like my job up here is to try to, to try to come up with ways so that we don't have to drastically slash our services to you, the townspeople. And if that means being in compliance for an extra four months and then have that vote happen when it's going to happen, I just feel like it's a responsibility of the town to, to look at that.
And I, I echo a lot of that, except for the fact that if we're charging Cody with telling the state that we're on our way to, to explore compliance, is he actually doing that? Are we lying to the state and are saying our efforts are coming? Is he wasting his time spinning his wheels, putting something together while something else could be worked on? I just, I'm not sure putting it in motion and laying the groundwork for something that's not gonna come to fruition is a, is a constructive use of time for him or anybody else.
I get that, I get that. But if it means we, we get more grant funding and we don't have to eliminate a position or we don't have to cut hours to our services, I guess it's at what cost? And, and, you know, again, I don't think, I don't think anyone here thinks that it's in danger of flip-flopping the decision of the town, but if it means that we can improve the town here financially, I think we should at least consider it.
In the back there? Yeah.
Van Donley, 201 Cranberry Drive. I just wanted to talk about that issue. We talk about schools and everything else, but, which I, I'm glad she's linking this together because has anyone here explored with the, the state, the local mandate determination of being unfunded? We're talking about what the costs are gonna be. We're talking about schools and everything, right? And the people that come in here. Our schools are gonna go up drastically with the people that come in from the developments that are coming in here. This is clearly an unfunded state mandate and nobody has requested from the state auditor a determination on whether this is a unfunded mandate or not. So why have we not done that, number one? And before we do that, what we should do is we should have a financial analysis of what the impact of that is going to do to our town services, our schools, and so on. And, and it's clearly, if I go through this and look at this, there's no way this is not an unfunded mandate. Now, it needs to go to the courts in order to be determined, but the auditor first, right? She's got a chance to do that and you get a determination on what that is. We should, as a, as a town, the first thing we ought to do is ask the question, right? Is it unfunded or not by the auditor, who's exactly not in the best standing, probably with the governor right now? So the good news is I would definitely bring the state auditor in to look at this, but we have to do a financial impact on what this is. We have to find out what does, what those gonna do to police, what it's gonna do to fire, what it's gonna do especially to schools in the situation we're already in, whether we gotta give money to students that are gonna go in to travel to some other school, okay? Or we gotta put the money into our own school system. This is a huge unfunded mandate. And with Kingston coming on board, okay, with what they're doing in their area, we could likely be looking at building a new school down the road. Because they're gonna have to kick all their students in the, in the building they already have down there. This, I don't know why no one's looking at this. This is just mind-boggling to me that we have to take on all of this stuff from the governor telling us to do this. And I think if we go ahead and just, you know, pass on this stuff, we, I mean, this is, the vote on this thing was so far out in reality here, don't bother, right? Send a strong message to them, sorry, governor, we said no. And at the same time, I'm gonna try to reach out to the, the Federal Department of Justice to come in and take a look at this town, because audit isn't even passing in the state right now, let alone what they're doing to the federal government, USAID. It's not passing here. It's unpassed the sniff test. So something's wrong. So I'm gonna try to do the best I can to see if I can get ahold of Pam Bondi, the Attorney General, to see if she'll get involved here. Because the state is being demanded to do this and illegal aliens are being deported at a pretty alarming rate right now, which is good for the country itself. So ultimately, at the end of the day, we're, we're of laws. They've already shut down any funding to states and cities that are sanctuary cities. That's been put out by the Department of Justice. So that'll affect Boston, okay? That'll affect anybody that claims they're one of those cities. So you can't even, you know, you can't even get any funds. So she's getting hit with the same thing she's trying to do to us right now, which is the basically mandate to us that we gotta do something or we're gonna lose funding. She's got the same thing on her desk right now. So if you can, I would get somebody, I'll look a lawyer to write a letter, okay, to the auditor to get this thing determined whether this is an unfunded mandate or not. But in order to do that, you're gonna have to show you what costs you're gonna bear from this development that's going in. So somebody needs a financial analysis of this to make sure you have it. And that's just, just, that'll keep you going for a little while if you want, but bottom line is, don't pursue anything that is not what the vote is wanted. We understood what we gotta take on. And, and I think that's pretty much all I gotta say here, is we should be doing those two things right now. And at the same time, I'm gonna definitely try to do what I can to reach out federally. Because again, I think this, it's just an unfunded mandate that we're being, and I don't think anyone can tell me here that there's gonna be no increase in schools after that development within five years. Hell, I don't even know the pupil count today to what the, the rates are going up. I'm not against the schools, I'm gonna put that clear here. If the schools needed something, it needed to be done, I don't have any kids in this school, but I'm sure as hell I'm gonna vote for the kids if it's the right thing to do. I don't know if it is because I just see line items, I can't read. Like, oh, what's the last five years on the trajectory of the schools? What is it? Is it, is it going up at a rate that's way high? I don't know, right? So I can't make that kind of analysis. But the one thing I want to point out, I heard too, and then maybe somebody can tell us later, I heard that somebody said there's lead in the schools, right? If that's a case, and it isn't lead in the schools, that should be an emergency fund situation to take care of immediately because the kids are more important than anything. Yes. I'm sorry.
Have it, of course it happened. Of course it happened.
Suspend it.
You can't do it before 6.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we got it, yeah. So I want to make sure that everyone knows we have actually a public hearing scheduled at 6 o'clock. If there are not too many more comments, we can finish it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to suspend that and go into the public hearing. So I think Mr. Faver had his hand up. Are you all set? All right, and you, you want, you want to respond? Yeah.
I was just gonna speak to the lead situation in the school. It's completely resolved now.
It's not resolved.
It is resolved. The, the, the water fountains where anyone drinks out of have filters. It's been tested. All of the, the only thing is we don't have sinks in the classrooms, but that is not required. There are sinks in the bathroom.
Please don't, please don't interrupt, Karen, please.
I'm saying, according to our health inspector, and there is no, the lead levels in the school are fine. We're not letting the sinks in the classrooms be on out of an abundance of caution.
Okay.
So it is resolved.
Thank you. All right, well, so I'm not gonna get off on a tangent on that, but that's outside of what we're really talking about. What we're, we're here to discuss the MBTA plan. Is it related to?
It's important that we got that.
Well, again, the school issue is, is, you're getting too far, you're getting too far. All we need to decide tonight is whether or not we wanna stay in compliance or not.
We're talking about health and safety.
No, I get that.
You're not even told the truth.
But that's not the issue right now. We'll talk about that when we get to school budgets, but that's really not where we are right now. Okay, so, um, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, I would make a motion to take no action, respond in no way, and to stay in non-compliance, quote-unquote, with the Commonwealth on the MBTA 3A zoning law.
I'll second that. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So it passes by majority. We'll take no action on that. Again, who knows what's gonna happen. All right, so now I need to open a special, a hear, a, a joint, I'm sorry, open the public hearing for the wage and personnel, the joint meeting with the finance committee. So we'll do a vote with us and then a vote with them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I would make that motion that we.
I will second the motion to open the meeting.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim? You have to do it at your end.
It's on Jim.
You're on, Jim. Green light means you're on.
I would like to open the, the finance committee portion of the wage and personnel committee. All members are present except for Cheryl Burke, who is out of town at this point in time, but we do have Quorum.
Okay, did you get a vote on it? Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, good. Now we can start. Cody, you wanna take over?
Yes, so this is a requirement of our wage and personnel bylaw. This public hearing is held annually. All of the prerequisites were met. The notification was sent out to any positions and their managers affected by this bylaw. You all have copies of the proposals. There are three proposals. The first one is a 2% cost of living adjustment for all positions covered by the bylaw for FY '26. The second one is to remove the veteran services officer from a stipended position to, and change it to a grade six position under the compensation plan. And then the third is to replace the current personnel bylaw with attachment A, which is a simplified personnel bylaw that several towns throughout the state utilize. So we can go into specifics, but only three, three proposals this year.
So just on the last one, I think it's important that we recognize, historically, the town had a separate wage and personnel board, composed of three members. At some point in the last five years or so, that was disbanded, and the wage and personnel board was reconstituted as a combined board between the finance committee and the selectmen. It is, under this bylaw change, the, the finance committee would be, would be taken off of that responsibility, and, and the board of selectmen would essentially take over as the personnel board for the town of Halifax. But I think that's the most significant part of this change here.
It really puts a lot of it to policies rather than being extremely specific in the bylaws. It's, which is what most communities are doing, is you have a, an employee handbook that governs the policies, and that would be approved by the personnel board, which would effectively be the board of selectmen. The reason for the change for the board itself is it's challenging to get both groups together on a regular basis for some of these mundane tasks, where the board of selectmen, you know, is meeting regularly. And also, you've been elected to, to serve as the chief policymakers of the town and represent the town, so this is kind of the trend you're seeing for most communities.
The other, the other part of this that is significant is that because of a recent vote by, I guess it's the clerical.
Clerical. Clerical and library.
Clerical and library personnel in town hall. Whereas the wage and personnel bylaw used to cover almost everybody, it is now down to the veterans' agent, police matrons, special police officers.
It's all.
Hmm?
It's all. So most of our department head positions, and then a few other.
Oh, and the department head stuff, right, yeah. Yeah, right, right. That, that's true too. But anybody that doesn't have a contract. So in other words, in other words, the population is much smaller that the wage and personnel deals with now, so. Okay, so we can, does anybody on the finance committee wanna make any comments or suggestions or anything about any of the proposals? We don't have to vote on anything tonight, we're just opening this up for comments and, and so on.
So you would vote, yeah, you'll just need to make a vote prior to town meeting, prior to the warrant being finalized, for what your recommendations are, and we'll put on an article.
Okay. Jim, I'll leave it up to you folks.
I don't, I don't believe that. We haven't really had. We haven't really had an opportunity to review this and digest it.
Okay.
I think on its face, it certainly sounds like a good idea, since the population group that would be covered by the wage and personnel committee is actually dramatically smaller than what it was. And I would also agree from a scheduling perspective, it's, you know, it's pretty difficult to get all of us in the same room at the same time. So I, to me, just, it sounds, it seems to be a good idea, just wanna kind of read through it a little more.
Okay. Anybody from, I should've asked the board, any questions, comments? Anybody here that has a comment or question about the wage and personnel wants to make a comment on our, our public hearing? Uh, yes.
Amy Troop, Ten Hillside Ave. I wanted to know, I forget what year, it might've been 2000, it might've been 2019, maybe 2021, but we had a vote at town meeting to disregard wage and personnel. Do you recall that?
I don't know, I don't know what the date was. It was before 2020, I think.
Right there, right? So I, I'm confused how we still have it. Does that?
We, well, if you look at the, the bylaw change, it, up until whenever that date was, and I'm not sure what it was, the wage and personnel committee consisted of three citizens-at-large that were appointed by the board of selectmen on staggered term. That, and I could tell you from experience that it was very difficult to keep that board staff. People just didn't really like that job. It's a difficult job, probably, probably the hardest job in town as far as I'm concerned. So at some point, the town meeting voted to reconstitute the wage and personnel, and that's what you're looking at right now. We are, this combined group is the wage and personnel under the bylaw. This proposal would change that and would, would just make it the board of selectmen.
Okay. And so there are three people on the wage and personnel, and they're citizens-at-large?
No.
Not in.
The wage and personnel, this proposal is that the board of selectmen would be the personnel department, essentially. I think they might be calling it different, but it's doing away with wage and personnel.
Do you remember, I don't remember reinstating the wage and personnel at town meeting. I'm not saying that it didn't happen, but I don't remember that article on town meeting.
I don't know. We can look it up, but I know it, I know it's changed. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're trying to reinstate it?
No.
No.
No, we're trying to.
I'm confused, because I don't remember when it was reinstated.
It's just changing the makeup of the, of the, of the personnel board to be no longer the combined finance committee and board of selectmen, just be the board of selectmen.
Okay. How many people are on the finance committee right now?
I don't know how many.
Seven.
Okay, and it's full? One, two, three, four, five, six. Is there somebody missing tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the proposals? So we will.
Table it to a future meeting, when we have a joint meeting to discuss final budget with the finance committee, we could do it at that point.
All right, but first thing would be to close the hearing.
Yeah, you wanna close the.
All right, so I will move that we close the public hearing for wage and personnel.
Second.
On the board of selectmen, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Jim? You have to close your end.
Just the public hearing.
Public hearing part.
Okay, we'll be, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for the finance committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Okay, so now you also wanna talk about the school budget?
Yeah, so two additional items on the agenda. One is just overall budget discussion for fiscal '26, and then particularly, we have Lauren Laws, who's the chair of the school committee, and we have Dr. Prue and a few other members of the school administration here to discuss the school budget. But I, I think just before we dig into that too much, the finance committee and myself and our town accountant, Lindsay Martinelli, have met with every department at this point other than the schools who have submitted their FY '26 budgets. What I can tell you is there were several requests in the double-digit percentage that were probably warranted, but we, we asked departments to cut those requests down, recognizing that our revenue growth is around 2.8% for this coming year, so any increase beyond that would pull from another department. What we plan to present to the full finance committee is a pretty solid budget on the town side. There are several factors and areas that are resulting in the budget increases, primarily our fixed costs, which we're projecting to go up almost 10%. That's primarily driven by our health insurance, which is going to be somewhere in the range of a 10% to 15% increase. Our property liability insurance is an 8% to 10% increase. Our Plymouth County retirement assessment is an 8% increase. Those are all fixed costs that we really, we have no control over. But on the other end of that, like I said, there were several departments that were requesting increases due to their operations that we are not going to be recommending, and that includes, you know, some of the, the recognition from our public safety, who continue to kind of do with, and be cognizant of the budget. Their, their request this year across all public safeties is 0% increase from fiscal '25 to fiscal '26. That's unprecedented. You don't see that in most communities or in years, so kudos to them. But with that, we were able to afford a 3.5% increase in our cost of education. The Halifax Elementary School Committee did meet last night. Their level service budget request was around a 23% increase, and they did move forward and vote to request that move forward. With that, we're still waiting on Silver Lake's final request, and the superintendent and team can get into it, but if we, if we were to fund all of those requests in addition to the reasonable requests that we anticipate from the town side that we've cut down already, we are looking at a deficit of around $1.5 million. And so that's kind of the, the discussion here tonight with the finance committee. We have the school here and the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen are the only ones that can put an override on the ballot, a proposition two and a half override. So I think from the finance committee's perspective, from our perspective, we don't need the board of selectmen to say tonight, yes, let's move forward with a X dollar amount override. But what we do need is, is there an interest from the board to, to investigate an override, to pursue an override? So working with the finance committee, we can prepare budgets. We're looking at, if that is the case, we'll prepare two budgets, one that would be contingent upon an override approval, and one that would, would be without an override approval. Or do we move forward with just what we have in the tax levy and all of our, you know, local receipts and state aid, and not pursue a budget that would include an override? So that's the group discussion here that we need to have tonight.
Unless somebody on the board has, wants to start, I would suggest that we take comments first, and then, then we can at least have other perspectives, unless you wanna jump in right up.
Sure. Maybe let the school give just a little bit of background, I don't know if Jill or Sarah's here. Maybe just give, or Lauren even.
Jill Prue, superintendent of schools, Halifax Elementary School and Silver Lake Regional School District. In January, we presented a level service budget for the school committee to consider. We also presented with them with a 10% decrease, which was at the time what all departments were asked to present in the town of Halifax. We presented what those cuts would look like. More recently, we looked at what it would, what the Halifax Elementary School, what the cuts would look like if we had a level funded budget plus a 1.75% increase, taking the 3.5 and splitting it in half between Silver Lake and Halifax. Those tiers of cuts were presented last evening to the Halifax Elementary School, School Committee. And we also focused on cuts from last year. We also explained why there was a difference of 23% and how circuit breaker impacted that overall percentage rate. So we talked about how last year the budget was offset with more circuit breaker money than Halifax is eligible to receive this year. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have. Last night, the Halifax Elementary School, School Committee voted to pursue a level service budget and to present to the board of selectmen to consider a possible override.
Sarah Hickey, 17 Highland Circle, Director of Finance and Operations for the Silver Lake Regional School District and Union 31. Silver Lake School Committee directed us to present a Silver Lake budget that was a 2% increase over FY '25. That's what we have presented to Silver Lake as the preliminary budget. We are again meeting on Thursday night, so nothing is final. The preliminary assessment using that 2.2% increase for Silver Lake would have Halifax' preliminary operating assessment at $8,610,322.50. The exempt capital is $444,423.19 for a total assessment of $9,54,745.69, which would be a 5.1% increase over the previous year. So think back to what Cody just said about the fixed costs with the Plymouth County assessment and the health insurance and the property insurance. All of those things that he just spoke about for the town also apply to Silver Lake, because we are responsible for the health insurance, the Plymouth County retirement, and the property insurance. The town operating that was voted by the school committee last night was $8,247,111, which is an 18.4% increase over FY '25, which would make the total cost of education for Halifax at $17,301,856.69. That is an 11% increase over FY '25. Again, all of this is predicated on a number that hasn't been voted by the Silver Lake School Committee, and so these are preliminary, preliminary calculations.
Okay. Does anybody from the board have any questions for the school?
Just a quick comment. I know, I know last year we were in a tough situation as well, and I know the way it shook down was at the elementary school level. We, we took a considerable hit, more so than the regional level. So I know the budget hasn't been set for the regional level yet, so I would hope maybe this year, where the elementary schools kind of took it on the nose a little bit last year, that the Silver Lake School Committee would consider that and maybe look at having the regional school take a little bit less of the educational budget.
So to be clear on that, the Silver Lake operating budget had a $650,000 decrease last year. There was $750,000 taken from the excess and deficiency, which is the equivalent, the, it's the regional school equivalent to free cash, and that $750,000 reduction to ease the burden on the towns meant capital projects were deferred. So I understand that the personnel piece, that there was more, but Silver Lake did take a hit.
Sure.
So forgive, I have, I have a couple things to say, but while I have you guys up there, and forgive me if, this is intended to come off okay. I was there last night, a lot of passion in the room, an unenviable task all the way around for the school committee and the administrators. Of all the cuts that we talked about or that were discussed, and I might've missed it, any administrative positions being cut? Any, any positions or salaries? Is that on the table? Is that possible?
So we legally, we did consider administrative positions, and we consulted with our attorney. We're legally obligated to honor contractual obligations, and so you, we have contracts that were currently, haven't expired, and so there's no adjusting or going back on those promises or contracts that we have made to administrators.
And that's different than the contracts that the teachers have at the local level? Just from my own edification?
Yes. The collective bargaining agreements have terms that also include reduction in force protocols or expectations.
Okay. Jim, anybody from the finance committee with questions or comments or anything?
Do, does the, does the school know what its projected increase will be for FY '27? I mean, 'cause you can just kind of forecast from the past couple of years whatever it will be next year. The reason I'm asking is, is that the townspeople are being asked to, you know, consider and vote for an override, and the override's permanent. It's not a one-year thing. It stays as soon as it's voted in. My, my, my. one-year thing. It stays as soon as it's voted in. My, my, my prediction here is that next year, you'll be back for another override, because you're going to say, we just, we didn't plan properly or whatever. And costs went up, and now it's instead of an 11% increase, it's now a 21% increase. So, the burden then falls to the people of the town to, to counter that, right? Because there's, there's contracts in place. I certainly can appreciate that. And again, to echo Mr. Pratt, I don't envy anybody, any school committee at this point. It's a, it's a tough road. Absolutely agree with that. But, you know, it's, you know, just from my perspective, it's a business. You know, and it has, it should be run by a business. But that's why, if we don't know what '27 is going to be, you know, what's the anticipated, you know, what's the anticipated run rate for the schools over the next couple of years? Because it's going to come up at some point.
So, I completely understand your question. You need to take a number of things into consideration. The first one is that at the behest of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Silver Lake Regional School District and Union 31 did a major structural, well, a major restructuring last year. So, which is why I now talk about this total cost of education because of the shifts between things. So, comparing FY '24 to FY '25 really doesn't work. One of the things that happened with the budget this year is there are adjustments for things that I found. I'm going through a complete chart of accounts overhaul with the budget to align the budget with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education chart of accounts, also in alignment with the Massachusetts, I forget what it's, the UMS manual, which is the United Massachusetts Accounting System. So, to get us in compliance with that, and as I'm making those shifts, I was finding things that were unbudgeted for that I'm budgeting for. So, previously, there were some revolving accounts that the Department of Education told us to stop using. So, now everything is 100% transparent. So, to go back to your original question of what do I forecast for FY '27 and '28, I'm looking at reasonable three, you know, cost of living increases.
Sure. Right. So, that, I mean, I'm not, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the level of work and effort that has to go into that. But a rough order of magnitude is, you know, you've grown 2% here a year, so I anticipate another, you know, 2% growth, the 2% plus another 2% tomorrow. But that's really the question. And I have the other side of this is, you know, how is, how is the school looking at the declining enrollment? And adjusting that for the budget? So, over the last 15 years, the elementary school is down 16%, or I'm sorry, 15% enrollment. The high school is down 15%. So, how is that, since the state funding is based on enrollment, that's going down, which means the state funding is going down. So, how is that impacting the calculations of the Board?
Did you say the Silver Lake decreased 50%?
According to the DESI website, 15%.
15, 1.5.
Okay. Do you want?
Sure. The best, the, I think the simplest way that I can answer this is that with every presentation, we talk about the impact on class sizes and offerings. So, ultimately, we present, for example, in Halifax, what it would look like if certain numbers of staffing were cut at grade level. So, while your numbers may be going down in some areas, in some areas, your numbers are increasing. So, your K1 and 2, if I recall from last evening, those are larger class sizes than your upper elementary grades, for example. So, we take that into consideration in presenting that to our school committees. At the secondary level, it's a little bit more complicated as the scheduling becomes more complicated. So, with the high school schedule, you have a variety of levels and you have a variety of offerings. And again, when we present to the school committee, what we explain is that we would attempt to maintain certain class sizes. And so, you may see certain electives go away, or you might see elective class sizes grow. And that's part of the debate and discussion that goes on as part of that. It's, it's not as simple as the, the grid that we put out for the elementary class sizes, because it's more complicated. And we do try to offer as much and maintain as much as we can. But again, if a class doesn't have enough enrollment, we won't run a particular elective or course or offering. Or we'll try to find other ways for students to take that course, whether it be through dual enrollment or an online course, for example.
Right. I appreciate your response. And so, I want to take it on to a more general level. So, just looking at it holistically, if the school's population is down 16%, state funding goes down 16%, it's based on enrollment, how is that reflected in this budget? That's the question. I think it's a fairly simple question, but I can ask it differently.
I think our special education director would like to respond.
One interesting to consider, so for state aid at the regional level, Silver Lake takes that into consideration. For state aid, Chapter 70 at the elementary school level, we, we're the ones that take that. That just goes into our general state aid. So, our, our projected state Chapter 70 increase for fiscal '26 per the governor's budget, which is what we typically use, is a 1.1%, 1.15, something around there. And they can definitely speak to the Silver Lake side of it. But the town side of it for the K through 6, we, we're responsible for projecting that side.
Dr. Panery Sam, the Director of Student Services. You are correct. When the enrollment goes down, why would the costs go up? And the costs go up because you have 23% students with disability, which has been rising year after year in Halifax. So, what we're really looking at is approximately one out of every four child, children, sitting in that classroom is a student with disability. And it costs more money to educate a child with disability, and that's our responsibility. That's what we do as a town. So, that's one part of it. You're facing another situation where if you do not spend a certain amount of money, because not all of those costs are attributed to the town, the state provides many buckets of money. But if you do not meet your minimum spending for students with disability, you give up grants. And that's what we're facing for next year. So, not only do we have a decreased budget, we are going to leave money on the table.
Okay. I appreciate you being here. Just one quick question. So, last year regarding IEPs, at one of the meetings, you've stated that all the IEPs in place are being evaluated. Are you going to see if they're being delivered correctly? How did that go?
We, again, we have a new IEP system. We are working our way through every IEP because legally, every child and every parent and every family has an annual review or a reevaluation and as we go through them. But one thing that you cannot do, and you have to understand this, is even if we found errors, and we corrected some errors for services and things like that, parents and guardians have the right to have, we get that, and have a stay put, which means those services remain until it's resolved through mediation.
Okay. Anything else from the finance committee? Over here, yep. If it's green, you're on.
If it's green, EJ, you're good to go.
You got me? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So, I just, I just have a couple very general comments. First, and I think most importantly, I watched last night's meeting. I wasn't there in person, but there, there was a lot of passion, as was mentioned earlier, and there was a lot of care for, for the kids and for what's going on in that situation right now financially over the schools and the work that's being done to support them. I, I, as a resident, appreciate that from all of you that are on the committees and within the, within the administration. So, I want to make sure that I say that upfront. Jim, Jim made a comment about, you know, if, if, if the selectmen were to decide to move forward with an override, it's something that needs to be considered carefully on their end to put on the table to begin with. But then our, as residents, it's our responsibility to make sure that we understand the true impacts, impacts of that long-term. So, I, I think there's a, there's a couple of reasons why I say that. The first is, it's what's at stake here. It's, it's the kids' education. They, they, we're at a point in time now where, where the kids need support. They're going to need support from, from the town. And we've all seen things happen over the years within the community when money gets asked for, and, and we have certain things that are, that are being looked at financially, and that gets met with a lot of adverse reaction. And I, I hope as a resident, and I'm not talking as a, as a finance committee member here, I'm talking as a resident, I, I hope that we as a community do not forget what this is about. And I hope that everyone that, that takes part in the discussions, if we arrive at going for an override and does not lose sight of what this is about, this is not about, this is not about personal feelings, this is about what our kids need. And I think that needs to take priority over everything. So, regardless of what happens, regardless of whether or not the selectmen request that the town look at an override or not, the reality is, is we have a very tough several months and several years ahead of us. So, there's no better way to do that and to get through that than rallying together, not pulling apart. And that's all I wanted to say about that.
All right. Any comments from anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Joe Fava, Gladio Bosworth, 66. I wonder if the school people can tell me how many people, how many students come off these IEP programs? It seems they're adding a lot.
How many students come off?
Come off these programs, rather than keep adding. One out of four is kind of a lot.
Yeah.
Who oversees and who determines who needs them?
Okay. Well, if you want to take a seat, I'll get an answer for you. I think we have an answer here.
Well, I mean, my brother was a principal of a school. You know, I mean, he had zero.
So, can you maybe explain that IEP thing? It's a foreign concept to a lot of, a lot of us.
So, if you look at the average number percentage of students with disability across the United States, Massachusetts has one of the highest. So, you would think that all the students with disabilities have arrived and are living in Massachusetts, and that's not the case. Massachusetts has a very liberal, very generous eligibility process. And so, what happens is the team decides if there is a disability, to your point. Disabilities for children do not go away. If they do go away, what we're dealing with is a learning gap. So, what we build is compensatory skills. Do kids come off of the IEPs? Yes. Where do they come off of the IEPs? Likely at the high school and middle school years where the percentage is 15%. So, when we look at the elementary levels, we're anywhere between 17, all the way to 23. And then when you go to the middle school and high school, the numbers are lower because kids learn compensatory skills. Even if they have a disability, they're still able to access and learn just as well as anybody else. So, that's that piece of it. I did also request team chairs, because I think you're exactly correct. It takes a very good eye to analyze the data for eligibility and to be able to ask questions and to be able to triangulate the different buckets of data that are brought to that team meeting. We have people, and I, and I have to take my hat off to the Halifax staff, they are just incredible. I have people that are teachers that have 25 to 29 kids on their caseload. They are facilitating team meetings. They are providing services to students and they're co-teaching inside classrooms, and they're doing it all. And if you look at their scores, their scores are pretty good, and they're probably the highest of all elementary schools, okay, in the district. And that's something to be very proud of. It's impressive, to say the least. They're constantly looking at data. They're constantly pushing the children, and it's remarkable to see. And a lot of these people work overtime without being paid, and you don't grab them. I will be very, very honest and transparent, and people that know me will say that. You also have one of the most litigious towns. So, out of all the towns, most of, most of the cases that we need to resolve in a legal arena come from, come from this town as well. And that's fine. I believe that parents and families should advocate for their students and their children. I never, I never brush away from something like that. But all of the students at Halifax that are on IEPs right now, they're being serviced at a level that I wish every single school could give. It's impressive, to say the least. And kids are moving along. You can see the data. Look at the MCAS data. It's right online. It's impressive.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments about the school budget? Yes, sir.
Again, Van Donley, 201 Cranberry Drive. A couple of questions on the amount of money we give to kids that don't go to the school and go to another school. Is that rising? Are we losing more kids from the elementary school that we're paying to take money and travel elsewhere?
Say that question again, the amount of-
From what I understand, we're giving money to students that don't go to the school in town, right?
Oh, tuition.
Charter school or whatever.
Oh.
Whatever would give you. So, the question is, is that rising? Are people leaving here to go to another school?
I, yeah. Ms. Laws? If you want to just have a seat so she can answer your question.
Lauren Laws, 33 Highland Circle, Halifax Elementary School Chair. We actually had a slide on this last night where we have record low students leaving to go to charter and private schools in Halifax. I believe, I had a lot of numbers last night, but I think it was four. And I don't know.
I think four for five.
Right.
Five is five for Halifax.
Okay. So, we have, but it is-
There will be more.
Anyway, so, it is at a decline in Halifax of students leaving.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah. The next question I had, we talked about the Circuit Breaker budget, and, and I guess I just want to know, when was that, when did that happen? When, what was the funding for that? When did that happen? Was that beginning of the year or?
Yeah, please. Yeah. If you just, if you just have a seat so she's not intimidated by standing on top of her. Thank you.
Circuit Breaker is a state reimbursement that was brought out of the Education Reform Act of 1993. And the Circuit Breaker reimbursement is for the town reimbursing up to 75% of special education costs that go over a certain threshold. So, it has been around since the Education Reform Act of 1993.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments that we have on the school budget? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Jen Gooddale, 81 Cranberry Drive, Halifax. I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to share my family's story that my daughter was identified in second grade as having a phonics issue because of COVID. Her teacher was the one that flagged that. She then entered into an IEP, and she's testing out this year in sixth grade. So, it does happen, sir. But if you saw the tiered cuts for last night's meeting, there's the math specialist that's going to go away and the reading specialist going away. She wouldn't get these services if you guys are going to cut those out. So, I encourage you to seek an override and also work with the, the school to kind of come to an agreement. And I also understand that we had to give back, the school had to give back about $100,000 because we didn't spend as much. Can we get some of that back this year?
So, a few, a few things on that, because I've heard a lot of misinformation. So, the Halifax Elementary School is a department of the Town of Halifax, just like the police department, just like the fire department. And what we, when we budget, we, we try to budget as close to possible. But sometimes there's money that doesn't get spent. That goes into our free cash. That funds our capital items, for, including the elementary school. If we don't have turnbacks from our departments, including the elementary school, that means capital items do not get funded. So, if there's a capital request at the elementary school, there, there would be no money in the pot to fund that. So, free cash is a one-time revenue source, similar to what E and D is at the Silver Lake level. You can't utilize one-time monies for reoccurring expenses, because this is a, a permanent increase, right? We anticipate an increase at the elementary school that will, it's not going to go away. We're not going to see a decrease next year. Hopefully, that increases at a much smaller level. But that, we're looking at a permanent increase, so you can't fund it with one-time monies. But the, the turnback is something, every department of the town turn back, turns back money to, to the general fund. And that's how we fund our capital and we have our free cash. So, that is certain, I think it was a little more of a public process this year, turning back that, a little over $100,000. But that's, that's not abnormal. That is very normal that, that the schools turn back money to us. Silver Lake does it too, but that goes into their E and D for them to control, for them to fund capital. So, it's definitely not a foreign concept, and we, we need that. If we don't have money coming back, we have no, no funds available for capital, which we have to have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on the budget? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Tara Tenello. Address 425 Elm Street. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I prepared something longer, but I'll make it pretty brief. I was there yesterday at the school committee meeting. Thank you to the school committee members for all your hard work. This is an impossible, difficult, terrible situation that we in, are in, and I do recognize that and I understand that. I just want to reemphasize that underfunding the school will impact the town. Period, end of story. Strong schools attract families. They contribute to the economy. They enhance property values. If we continue down this path of reductions, we really risk making Halifax a less desirable place to live for families and that is terrifying. An override, also terrifying. What if it doesn't go through? I don't know those answers. It seems pretty clear tonight that we don't have all the answers yet. We're still waiting on information from Silver Lake, I believe. This is just an impossible, impossible decision to make, but I urge, I urge you all to think about these kids as, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. EJ? As EJ mentioned, we deserve it to this town and to these kids and to these families to protect education. It must be a priority. So I hope everyone can just take a beat and pause and try to work together to figure this out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just on the override part, just not, not specifically to you, but in general, we're not voting to override anything, the Board of Selectmen here. The only thing that is on the table and I only think we have to make a decision tonight is whether or not the annual town meeting will have, excuse me, will have a, an article for that and then there'll be a ballot question afterwards. Because it has, it's a two-step process, has to pass the town meeting and then has to also be voted on, on the ballot. So we're not deciding anything other than maybe putting that on the warrant for people to discuss. So that's, that's really all there is. But the whole budget issue with the school is kind of what's driving our discussion tonight. All right, anybody else have anything else to say about the school budget or anything? Do we need any, what's the fiscal budget preparation? Do we have anything?
That's just kind of that synopsis I gave initially. Just the synopsis I gave.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, so if...
Can I just say something really quick?
Yeah, please.
Just my thoughts quickly. First off, this is a tough position that Halifax is in. I would argue a historically tough position that we're in now. There's a lot of reasons for this and I think the, the one thing that we can all agree, this isn't just a Halifax issue. If you guys have friends in other communities and have spoken with them, there are countless towns across the state that are facing similar situations with their education budget. So to me, that says that this isn't a town issue. This isn't starting in our town. It's, it's starting from the state, right? It's, it's a statewide issue that we're trying to tackle. Doesn't make it any easier, doesn't change the tough position that we're in this year, but I do hope, and you guys can reach out to your state representatives, to take a hard look at the school funding formulas that they use, especially when it comes to special education. Those are crushing budgets, crushing budgets for your schools. And I think it, it needs a hard look as to how schools are reimbursed from those, from those kids. The other thing that we have working against us is we've been hearing for a while, we're approaching a fiscal cliff, right? The town can only raise our taxes 2.5% every year. I think we can all agree the cost of things over these last three, four years have skyrocketed. So when your town can only raise 2.5% and your costs start going crazy, you're going to get to the cliff. We're at the cliff right now. So I, budget-wise, I, I challenge the, the FinCom to sharpen the pencils like they've never been sharpened before, right? You guys are, we're putting a lot on the, on the shoulders of you folks to turn over every rock to try to find ways to save a buck like it's never happened before. So that's all I really wanted to say. It's tough. Everybody here wants to see our education as good as it can because a strong school is a strong town, right? Once you get that word out there that a school might not be what it used to be, it has repercussions on the town. That said too, we have residents that live on fixed income. So you have people that, that need money to, for food and heat and so, so to ask them to take on a big part of the burden is tough too. So that's, that's the pickle that we're in here, guys. And I hope we can work together and not, and not apart and try to figure out a way to figure this out.
In the back hasn't spoken and then Karen, so in the back, Chris.
Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. So from what I'm getting, if you vote to put this on the ballot, it doesn't really tie us to anything at the moment. We'll still vote at a later time. This will still give us more time to get all the missing numbers. They said very preliminary numbers. We don't have Silver Lake yet.
Right. What, if it's, if, if that's the issue on whether or not to include on the annual town warrant and the annual town election, question of whether or not to override, that's a decision for town meeting and the voters at the ballot box, so...
I'm just concerned, this is just a Band-Aid, just gets us through this year and from all the indicators on all different levels, it's not going to get much better in the coming years, I think, like the chairman brought up.
I think that's what the Finance Committee was talking about, yeah.
So this would, even if you vote to put it on the ballot, it'll still give us time to get more numbers, to look at more things. And at the town meeting, will we have like two different budgets presented, like if this doesn't pass?
Well, that's a good question.
That's exactly what you would have, yeah. So...
Okay, so we will be presented multiple different budgets, whether this passes and...
You get one with the, with the override in place and then that gets voted down, there's another budget that we presented as, this is how, this is what it looks like without that.
And we'd have time to vote with more information at that time?
Well, at the town meeting is one of all.
Okay.
We're, we're planning on public meetings when we get closer to the town meeting with the budget, just so everybody can see and answer those questions. So that, you know, get, get a lot. I personally want a lot of public input on the budget because it is public money that we're spending.
Okay.
So, you know, I think everybody should be able to see that.
Thanks.
I have two questions. I think it's probably for the school committee or for the superintendent, but in the slides last night at the meeting, they had listed an English sped teacher and a math special education teacher. Could you explain to us what will happen to the kids that are in an inclusion classroom and to their IEPs if we do not have those teachers? And the second part of the question is, who decides on what teachers are going to be, you know, that go if we have to go that route?
What teachers would be laid off?
Yeah, so there was a list in, in who determines who that is.
I think the superintendent can explain that, yeah. This is not a, not something that hasn't happened in the past. There's been years when we've had rifts and, and they've had to do that, so it's...
So unfortunately, cuts of this magnitude often require that we consider reductions in staffing or must include reductions in staffing. There's only so much of the things that we can cut and certain things can't be cut, like heat and electricity. And yet those costs continue to rise as well. So we, when we are given a task by the school committee and we're giving input from the town, we come together as a central office team and we work with building administration as well to think about what that would look like. We examine, we try to look at trying to maintain programming for students. So we try very hard not to cut programs. We also look at class sizes. And then we also look at contractual obligations. So one of the conversation items we had last night was some of the specialist positions were being cut. And the reality was is that because the class sizes were reaching a particular level, we had to start looking at programming and eliminating programming. Why we were able to look at cutting specialists at that point in the cuts was because contractually we have schedules where in the simplest terms, our specialist, our art teacher, our music teacher, our physical education teacher will cover for classroom teachers, take on their class while they have a prep and a lunch period, which is required contractually. So not only do they serve programmatic needs of our children, but they also helped us to serve an opportunity for us to meet our contractual obligations so that people can have a break in the day. So that might be more detail than, than what you wanted, but it's, it's part of what we look at, whether or not we can function structurally as well. So we don't just look at, wouldn't it be nice if the kids could have this or this? We look at what do we need to actually function so that we can meet our, our obligations to both students and staff? The reason why we went through certain cuts at certain grades is because we were literally looking at the numbers of children in a classroom. And ideally, we try to keep our numbers in the early elementary grades lower, as low as possible, while children are learning to read. There's a big transition that takes place when children learn to read versus reading to learn. And it's really important that we have lower class sizes to help facilitate that process. Otherwise, the learning gap continues to grow as they get older. If we don't, if kids don't learn to read at a young age, it's very difficult to close that gap. So that's another part of the decision that goes in. We examine all positions. As I mentioned earlier, we even considered administrative positions, but again, we're not allowed to discount contractual obligations that we have. So nothing is off the table. We work together. It, it's not something that is easy to do, something we like to do because, as you know, we're all former educators ourselves and we're very much pro-education. So to think about cutting it is very difficult for us. Nonetheless, that's the task that we, we go through and we present it and we answer questions as to what that would look like. Specifically, your question with regards to the special education teacher, that impact will mean that, that the caseloads will rise. And as we talked about, whenever it, it becomes more difficult to meet the students when there are more students to, to work with or, or help support, there's just fewer minutes in the day as your class sizes get larger. So again, while it may not be a violation of someone's IEP, it certainly isn't to the advantage of the students when their liaison has a higher caseload. Yeah, I think is the, the simplest way I could put it.
Okay, thank you. What's the question?
Would we be given, fulfill, like if someone has an IEP that says that they get 15 minutes a day, right, of, of special ed, are we going to be able to fulfill that?
So there'll be some redistribution of the caseloads. So currently we have some specialized programs where those teachers really are working with those students and those students only, so caseloads will be filtered out. Will we fill the services? Yes, we'll have to fill the services. There's no way around that. Don't forget, there are cuts for the social emotional piece for the students as well. There won't be a school adjustment counselor there and that's a heavy loss. So when we look at proactive measures of keeping students in the tiered approach for multi, you know, tiered approach for intervention as opposed to a referral to special education, you're going to see that skyrocket. You're going to see special education referrals skyrocket because that's what happens when you take away the general education supports. There's no place to go. There's only one game in town and it's special ed. So we're trying to battle that now, trying to move away from that. And we've done a pretty good job, but unfortunately with the cuts and without having those supports, and I'm not, I'm not giving you bad news, I'm just telling you what happens historically and research-wise. When there are no general education supports, people turn to special education to get, you know, supports for students that may not have a disability, but they may need extra help because that is the only way they feel they can help this child. So we have to be very cautious of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else have any?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick things. I mean, the disadvantage of going last is a lot of it's, what I wanted to touch on has been, has been said, but you know, I was there last night. I heard from upwards of several dozen people today via email or text or calls and some concern. You know, I'm a dad too and that's why I got involved. I have two young kids, one in kindergarten and one will be joining in about a year and a half. So I have two young children. So I'm, you know, I'm a father here, similar to what EJ was saying. He's a resident, well, I'm one too, and I'm a dad. So that's job number one, but I also am aware that we have an elected duty as officials to kind of represent the town's best interests. And the one thing that concerned me last night from the school committee was not the decision to pursue an override from the town, because I certainly understand that. It was that they went for the whole thing. And in my opinion, from my understanding, is if an override is put on the ballot for 2.31 million and it fails, the fallback on the tier cuts was the most dramatic cuts, tier three. So you kind of went all in and the backup plan is what? It has to pass a town meeting and a ballot. It's easy to raise your card green when all your neighbors are looking at you. It's another thing to cast your vote quietly in a box when your wallet is on the line. So my fear is not an override. As somebody who views the school as a centerpiece of the town, which has been said by multiple people, and I agree, if you don't have an elementary school, you don't have much because there's no future for you to protect or invest in, which as a dad is something that's paramount to me, which is why I got involved. But as an elected official, I don't think that in good conscience I can go all in and the backup plan is the disaster that was presented as tier three or tier four cuts. So while I can appreciate the override on its face, I'm wondering, and the school committee page, member Paige kind of said it last night, I thought we were going to get there. What about tier one and a half? What does it look like if this happens and not this? Where are we in the middle? Or of what was presented on tier one, two, and three, maybe there's tier 175? And that's the amount of the budget that a board of selectmen could feel confident in getting passed? Because what's put on the ballot is only as good as its ability to pass. If you, you can put whatever, we could, $10 million, there you go, has no shot. And $25,000 override makes no difference. So the balance is getting something on the budget that makes an impact on the future of the children, but that you'll have buy-in from the town that invests in those kids to pass. Not once, but twice. So that was my only comment about last night. I wasn't disappointed or disheartened that an override was out there. I just think it should be known that that was the number that was put forth by the school committee. Any, correct me if I'm wrong, but any proposal that we put together or not is an arbitrary number that we see fit. And that would be my only thing, is what's the fallback plan? Because if 2.3 is not feasible and I have my concerns, what will pass? Because the goal should be the middle ground that gets the most bang for the children. And just toward that end and I'll wrap up, I think that, you know, on the heels of the Silver Lake Elementary School, regional school meeting tonight, if appropriate, and I'm not sure how this works, you know, with open meeting laws or whatever, but might it be productive if the FinCom, our group, the HES and the Halifax members of the regional school committee met and found that middle ground for the presentation for consideration by the board to be placed on the warrant?
We've done that in the past. I think last year we actually had a, a joint meeting like that.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that would be productive and then we can know all sides of it and then try to find the middle ground again that we can feel, if that's the route we go, I'm not, we haven't talked, this is it. I just think that that would be the most prudent way to proceed is cautiously with a Plan B, which is a backup plan, not going all in with no, with no escape route.
Okay, first in the back and then Mrs. Klein.
Jessica Page, 47 Cranberry Drive. I'm speaking as a mom, not as a committee member. I just want to make it known that the school cut everything that the town asked last year, which is why we basically said, you can't just keep asking the town, like to, you can't just keep asking us to cut everything and we expect us to cut everything. It's, it's, it's unfeasible. A school can't run with a $1.3 million cut that was asked for. I did say, I think we need like a 1.5 tier. We just don't have enough time to get it. So we had to, we had to, we'll work on it. It's just, I mean, I guess I am now talking as a school committee member, but it's, it, we did every, the school did everything that we needed to do last year. We went to town meeting and you guys said, okay, now the school, the school gave us everything. This year we, we don't have it. We don't have it to give.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I think you did everything right last night too in, in asking for the override because that's, that's the best way out for the schools. The amount was what I was clarifying. But like I said, if you're tier 1.5, I thought we were going to get right there.
I was hoping, I mean, I hoped for, the, the cut from tier one to tier two is, hey, let's, let's, this is what we already cut to, hey, let's not have anything for our kids anymore. And at that, at tier two, there was going to be more people pulling their kids out of our school, which is going to greatly affect our schools even more. of our school, which is going to greatly affect our schools even more than this override would. And I can promise you that. I know I've had multiple, multiple emails, text calls, Facebook messages, everything today, saying if this didn't go through last night, they were going to look into different schools, charter schools, private schools, homeschool.
And that's, and that's, everybody's certainly right. I just would, I would, and I can understand that as a parent, but I would just caution you not to operate out of fear, because people will do that no matter what happens. They'll take their ball and go home. So, I don't want to operate that way. I just think the most basic way to say what I was trying to say was, there's middle ground, and it's incumbent upon the people in charge who are elected and appointed to find it for everybody. That's my point.
So, we're still, we're still early in the budget process. Well, it's moving along, but we are early in the budget process. It doesn't mean that even tonight, we weren't about to assign a warrant article or ballot question with a specific number, because we aren't there yet. The finance committee hasn't finished their work. They haven't, the school committee can still do their work. So, the numbers can still be adjusted as much as possible. I think, I think tonight's discussion is really more along the lines of, kind of like what you were saying, that is a, there's a potential shortfall in this budget, which is over half of our, half of our cost yearly. So, it's always a big deal. And, you know, what are the options available? One option is not to do anything. One option is to, is to present a possible override. If you don't do that, then what are the options on the override? So, that, we're still, and we have had that, last year, we had that meeting with school and this finance and everything. We had, Jonathan, Jonathan did yeoman's work. He actually worked it out pretty well to get everybody mostly satisfied. So, I think, I think there's still some time to do that. Lori.
Lori Costa-Klein, 285 South Street, Halifax. I am also a member of the Halifax School Committee, and I wanted to clarify some thoughts in response to Mr. Pratt's comments, and to echo some of Jessica's, and in support of our chairperson, who has really taken it on the chin, trying to find a solution that's reasonable for our town. To address the comments made by our FinCom chair about, are we looking at downturned enrollment? One of the questions that I presented last night was, there is room to reduce in some grades, the classroom teachers from four to three, and it would still be equitable with what classroom sizes are in the other three towns in our district. It would be based on the enrollment for those grades, which, if I'm not mistaken, was like 67, 67, and 69. We're not talking about 30 kids in a class. We're talking about 22, 23, if we go to three. The reason that I didn't suggest that we lower that amount and vote that amount, less three teachers, is because of line item autonomy. Line item autonomy allows our school superintendent and administration to decide, as Dr. Prue explained, where they deduct that money from the budget. So, by under, by asking that amount to be removed from the budget, which would be a 1.5 tier, there's no guarantee that that's how the money will be distributed, that those teachers wouldn't be, or those classes wouldn't be resized due to other obligations contractually. I don't think anyone on our committee is willing to just stop working on the budget. I think we all, and I know from myself personally, looked at a lot of things and did a lot of research before we went into that meeting. But ultimately, our town values the right to vote on things. They are very vocal. And I also represent not just the well-being of the students, but the taxpayers that elected us, and the voters that elected us. When it comes to something as critical as this, we all as elected officials need to do the work, yes, but we also need to acknowledge the will of the people. And I think putting a proposal on the ballot and at town meeting, a warrant, would allow town, townspeople to weigh in on a critical issue like this. It doesn't mean we're going to stop working on solutions. It doesn't mean we're going to start, stop trying to figure out a reasonable number. But we needed to give the town notice of what was happening. We needed to have a number. And I think that the two folks, it wasn't a unanimous vote. Three of us voted for a level service budget. Two of us did not. I think the two that did not were looking to present some cuts. I'm here absolutely willing to talk to anybody about what can we do to find a reasonable budget that doesn't diminish equity amongst the three towns in our school system. To Jessica's point, we cut a tremendous amount from the budget last year. That was not reciprocated in Kingston nor Plimpton. So, what we've created this year is unequal curriculum K through six this school year, in my opinion. We did not deliver the same services for Halifax that students in Kingston and Plimpton are getting, because they voted to level service. They did not cut. We cut a lot. We can continue to review what's reasonable, and we all will. But I think this is a larger conversation for an entire community. It's not just up to five people on a school committee to decide where cuts need to be made. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Yeah, Mrs. Lawson.
I just want to reiterate that, I'll say, this is Lauren Lawson, 33 Highland Circle, Halifax Elementary School Chair, just that we would like to ask for the possibility of an override. I did vote no last night, not because I don't care deeply about education, but I do believe that we can meet somewhere that hopefully can work for our students and our entire town. But my question tonight would be, can you please vote to at least put an override on the town warrant, so we can start working towards something for our town? The sooner we do it, the more effective we will be in what we're doing. So, that's my request.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, and then Chris in the back.
Hi, Van Donnelly, 201 Cranberry Drive. Yeah, I just appreciate that. That was a pretty good list of the topics and the issues, and a thoughtful way of doing that. I fought recently on one of the issues in town that went on, and I just think I got a pretty good grip of what's happening. Tom, pretty much behind exactly what he said, too. I want, you know, I don't have kids in the school system, but I still want to support them, right? And if it was up to me, I'd pay the bit tax, okay? But you're not, my opinion is, if you come in the way you are now, and you've got passion for this, and you're holding out, and I get that, right? Because you should have the passion for the kids. But I think right now, at least this year, you're going to have a tough time trying to get an override of that size through the town. So, my feeling is, if you work with them, and you come back to something realistic, then you have more people in the town that'll help sell it, okay? Because, you know, I've been in sales, you know, you sell them, don't tell them, right? And the issue, I think, on this year, maybe their social security tax gets reduced next year, maybe there's a bigger win there, right? But the issue is, is that I think as a town, we can come together somewhere in the, in the middle here to get, you know, make sure, because nobody wants to see kids suffer for any of this either. But I think we also don't want to see the elderly suffer either, if we can help that. So, there is something in the middle. I know that if you get there, I'd be personally willing to help here, you know, sell it, if it makes sense for the town. And, you know, I just, again, I really do appreciate the passion for all the teachers and everybody in town. And, you know, I generally stick up on issues where I think that are trouble, like MBTA. But this one, you know, to me, I think that Tom's dead on, and I think what you've said about some of the other issues, about coming to the middle one, I think makes sense for them this year. And that's all. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. In the back, Chris?
Just want to say, at this time, I'd have trouble voting yes. There just seems too many unknowns with still numbers to come in for this year's budget, and then the future year's budgets. But something Mr. Pratt said, could you just clarify how the town meeting would run, and then the ballot question? Because usually, we'd place a ballot question, and then that would come like a following weekend?
Well, the ballot would be at the, well, our current schedule is the second Monday in May is town meeting, and then the ballot would be on that following Saturday.
So, if we went to town meeting, we wouldn't really know what the budget would be, we're voting on all line items, not knowing what a later ballot question would be?
You would have two budgets. You'd have a level service budget, a level budget of what we can afford within our current levy limit and anticipated revenues. Then you'd have what's called a contingency budget, which would take into account the override. The town meeting would then have to approve the contingency budget, with that exactly contingent upon approval at the ballot. It would be approved if the ballot question passes. If the ballot question failed, it would revert back to the first budget that town meeting approved.
Okay. So, we'd vote on line items, knowing what both budgets would be?
You'd effectively approve two budgets.
Well, town meeting would have to, town meeting would have to agree to that. If town meeting says no to the contingency budget, then it doesn't matter, right?
Okay.
All right. So, what are, we don't need to actually vote on this. First of all, we don't have any numbers.
No, you don't need to vote. What I, what I need really, and the reason for this, is, does the board have an appetite? An override is a lot of work. The finance committee, and myself, and our financial team, we effectively have to create two budgets. So, we need to know, and also get the legal language, get the ballot question ready, get the warrants ready. So, we need to know, is there an appetite for it? And that would allow us to begin that process of preparing two budgets. To bring to you, once the finance committee's made a recommendation for your final approval, at that point, you would vote to recommend the budget. And then you would also vote an override figure, if you felt that was warranted. But what we don't want is to do all of that work if the board of selectmen say, no, there's no appetite for us to pursue an operational override, and at that point, we're not going to put all of the effort into creating two separate budgets. So, we just need to know, do you have an appetite? And if you say yes, then we're going to begin that work, and we will bring back to you some solid figures, once we have gone through the full budget sometime at the end of March.
Can I just have a quick point of order? And maybe this school can help me out. Let's say Halifax does do an override. Let's say we approve the budget, it passes at the ballot, but the other two communities at Silver Lake don't approve that budget. What happens to our school budget then, in that instance?
Oh, you're mixing two things. Elementary school and the assessment, right?
So, so, tonight, we're, but again, Cody, you're telling me, the cost of education includes both schools, right?
Yes, but.
So, we would eventually be looking at an override, essentially, that would be, be the regional school and the elementary school.
Yeah, but predominantly driven by the elementary school.
So, you don't foresee us being in a situation where we would approve an override for a regional? The budget would, the override on the budget would essentially just be focusing on the elementary?
I mean, the numbers are so preliminary out of Silver Lake, I just don't know. I can give you a.
Just to be clear, so, if we get a, we vote separately on Silver Lake, and the only thing we vote on Silver Lake essentially is, do we accept the assessment, right? And that requires two out of the three towns to say yes. If two out of the three towns say no, then Silver Lake, it goes back to Silver Lake, and they have to redo it. If two out of the three towns say yes, and we don't, we still end up paying it. So, it doesn't matter if we have an override or not.
No, I get that. I just was wondering if we were one of the, one of the only towns of the three to approve a budget where the other two did not, and how that would affect our override.
I don't know if Silver, I mean, so I.
We don't have to spend it all.
Yeah, right. In communicating with the other towns, you know, they're still discussing if there's appetite for an override. But I also don't know if the Silver Lake budget is going to result in an override being warranted in any of our communities, right? Because if, I believe Kingston can afford somewhere around 4%. Plimpton is still working through some figures. If Silver Lake presents a budget that all the towns can afford without an override, then, then the portion that we'd be seeking an override for would be just the Halifax Elementary School. But those figures are still coming out of Silver Lake, so that's information we just don't have.
So, we would have that information before we would set any sort of override figure?
Yeah, you would, you need a full budget before you can set an override figure.
We need a number.
Can we, can we set, I mean, is it appropriate to ask the FinCom, us, the Halifax Elementary School, and the Halifax members of this regional school district to meet?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. I think we should, I think that should be a top priority, to be honest with you. I think, among other things, the sooner the better, when as soon as each, you know, each group can get a quorum. To answer your question, Cody, I mean, I guess my quick opinion, I don't know if I'm jumping out of order.
No, I was just going to ask.
I mean, I think, I think it's worth investigating two budgets, and it's worthy of the town and the children to investigate an override.
All right. Jonathan?
I concur. No, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree also. I think, I appreciate the effort that has to go into this. We have a crackerjack squad. You guys do great work. We're going to, we're going to make you, put you through the paces, and that's, that's exactly why you're here. That's good. But I do think, I see no reason why we shouldn't have our options open.
Absolutely.
At this point. It's so early, right? If this was the day before town meeting, it'd be a whole different matter. But it's so early, which, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have all options open. Not saying I would agree that a override is warranted. I don't know that yet, because I haven't seen the numbers. But I do think we should, I think we should keep the option open.
I agree. Let the people decide. You know, I was one of the people that brought CPA forward. Let the town decide. MBTA, the town decided. With an issue this big, let the town decide. I want to, ahead of time, thank the FinCom and Cody, because they are now ready for an avalanche of work. To put one budget together is hard. To put two separate budgets together is an avalanche. So, they, they have their work cut out for them.
And they should be congratulated for all the work they do.
Absolutely. They shouldn't buy a drink in this town ever again.
So, that takes care of the budget thing. I think, finance committee, I think we're through with the issues with you, right?
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
I think, I think it's a valid point to investigate and be bear our options open. In light of that, I would ask that the town freeze all spending and hiring on articles that were awarded, and on extended funds that are not in the budget, so that we can evaluate those also.
So, one of my requests tonight was going to be that the board implement a hiring freeze, and only, all requests would need to come to myself and the board for final approval to hire. You know, as far as spending freeze, that's a little more difficult, because it's operational budget. My logic behind hiring freeze was, if we get into a situation where we have to reduce staffing, I would much rather not fill positions than have to actually reduce the staffing on a, you know, practical level, but also on an economical level, it's actually cheaper for us, because we're not paying unemployment if we're not filling positions. So, as far as the hiring freeze, I think that's definitely a recommendation that I was going to plan to make tonight.
Do you want us to take that up now?
I think, I'd recommend that you do. Effective March 1st, so we have a few positions, and give everyone advance warning. Department heads were notified that this was going to be my recommendation. They're aware of it. You know, as far as the spending freeze, it's, it's a little bit more challenging, because most of our spending is essential. We could implement a non-essential spending freeze, but pretty much everything we're doing is essential.
Okay. So, I would make the motion that we institute a hiring freeze as of, as of March 1st?
I'll second that.
Can I just, just before you guys vote on that, why, why March 1st?
Just because we have some positions open right now, and we want to give people advance notice, our departments that have gone through the work of that recruitment. And there might be some hiring in the process, where we've extended offers, where we're in the middle of interviews.
So, can't you do it, so, so, can't we do it, just based on if there are offers on the table, those are allowed to flush through? But anything that doesn't have an offer on the table? If we're going to freeze, we're going to freeze. Why give it three weeks to freeze?
Because I think it's just what we owe to our department heads, who've gone through all of the work.
Well, please don't just holler out from the.
Yeah, I just, I just think that if, if, if our goal is to save by halting the spend, then we should halt the spend and not give it time to continue to last.
So, again, the, the goal, you're, by implementing a hiring freeze, you're not looking to save the money this year, because that becomes free cash. You can't utilize that money next year. That doesn't help us next year. What that, what it does is, if we're looking at reductions in force, it frees that up, where we're not laying people off, and we are saving the unemployment. But you're, the money you save, that doesn't help us next year. It goes to one-time, one-time funds that we would then be able to utilize for capital, so it would help us in the capital side, certainly.
But not the operation.
But not the operational side of things. But not the operational side of things.
If you have a budget that's been created for next year that has that position, help from the hedge fund, that hedge fund.
Right, but the funding we would save this year doesn't help us, that, that money isn't freed up and then applied to next year, per se. In the budget, it would certainly be freed up, but if we saved anything this year, that would go into free cash and ultimately help us with capital, but a good thing. But again, I see both sides of it. The point of March 1st was just to, department heads were just presented with this today in our department head meeting, and it was just to let them know what's coming and so they're aware.
Is anybody gonna be hired in the next two weeks?
I mean, likely not.
I know we were advertising a truck driver.
Please identify yourself, Jean Galant.
Jean Galant, Library Director.
Thank you.
117 Cranberry Drive. Just a clarification, so we, we implement a hiring freeze, meaning, but do I lose that position in the library? So I have a circulation librarian, and she leaves, and I have a hiring freeze that I can't hire that associate. But do I lose that position when that hiring freeze is over?
So we would reevaluate in the budget for the next coming year. And again, it would be a case-by-case basis. Departments could make a request to hire that position. That would be reviewed by myself and ultimately approve, have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
So you're saying I actually lose that position, not just hire, don't hire somebody for that?
It's just not guaranteed, right, Cody?
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
We're gonna take a hard look at all the positions for next year.
Okay.
If, the, the position would still exist. It's just, is a matter of are we gonna budget for it next year? That's, that's the question.
Oh, that's, okay. No, but my position would still exist, so if things get better.
Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not removing positions from existence.
Not permanently, no.
Okay, so motion to hiring freeze as of March 1st.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay.
Before we go, John, in, can I, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Sorry, sorry. I was approached to by some residents, and I don't know, this might not be popular with some folks, about a, since we have FinCom here, the, the possibility of an overtime freeze.
I mean, again, I, that, it's the same thing as what I just said. You free up money for capital for, for next year. That doesn't help us apply it to, to the next year's budget. You can't, let's say we save $200,000. You can't apply that to.
To operations.
Operation. Do you, I also am concerned with, we're not, this year's budget, we're stable. You know, we're continuously reviewing revenues and expenses, year-to-date actuals, and we, we are fine this year. If we were underpaced for our revenues or our expenses were growing, then I would say, yeah, we need to implement something like that to save this year. The concern is, is most of our overtime is public safety related. I don't know how feasible it is to tell our police chief and fire chief that they need some sort of approval to get that overtime when it's, it's likely that they need that.
Correct. No, I just wanted to bring it up in front of the board.
My thought is the same, that if we were to consider that, I wouldn't do it tonight. I'd, I would want to have at least two weeks of information on that, because I think, I think, if I'm not mistaken, if we get a bunch of snowstorms, they're gonna be overtime in the highway department.
Yeah, everybody get your shovels.
Right, and so if we have.
But here, but I would just, but I would just take issue with a, well, a couple things. I mean, there is, there are some things that you could cut that are overtime. There are some things we, you know, I hate to say it, but the wood chipper on Saturdays does not, if, if things are tight in the schools, we don't have to have the wood chipper on Saturdays, you know? And that's, let's call a spade a spade. And the other thing is, if, public safety aside, if over, things are okay this year, but maybe if we didn't budget for so much overtime, the elementary school didn't, wouldn't have, who have cut as much last year as they had, as they did. If we weren't anticipating overtime to have been paid out, maybe there's more on the plate for the HES last year.
That's kind of a, that's kind of a Finance Committee mandate, really. That's really what they do.
We, the budget's a lot of work, and, and the Finance Committee and our financial team spend countless hours on the budget reviewing these things, take all these things into consideration, and, and we are a bare-bones budget in this town.
It's not a criticism of the budget of the FinCom.
No, absolutely not, but I just wanted to be clear that we, we dig into these things, and if, again, if that's something that the Finance Committee recommends to reduce next year, there would certainly be a savings realized next year, if you wanted to say no, the, the wood chipper, for example, no more that on the weekends. That would certainly be a savings for next year. That, if you cut it right now this year, that doesn't save.
I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking retrospectively. I'm talking about last year this time. I mean, what if overtime had to be approved by the FinCom, public safety aside?
Again, I get what you're saying. The FinCom, they're very involved, but a lot of times they don't know the operation of the departments.
Okay.
That's why we hire qualified department heads.
I'll let it go. I'll let it go, but you, we have spoken on other issues about things when overtime is just unilaterally approved, when there are other alternatives that would have saved the town money, that are only reviewed after the fact.
Mm-hmm.
And so those are the types of issues, without naming them, that should be addressed before they happen, not subsequent when they're paid out and come at the expense of other things.
Okay, so.
I was just gonna say, sorry to pull the pin on that, like, at the end of the meeting. I apologize. But just something for the FinCom to consider as we look at budgets for next year.
All right, so we're behind on our schedule. We have an appointment at 6:45 with Mr. Mark Chetwind, if I'm saying that wrong. It looks like there's a V in there, and I don't know how to pronounce it, so you might have to help us. And this is for the Veterans Services Committee. So if you would just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
Certainly. Mark Chetwind, 126 Palmer Mill Road.
Hold on a second. Folks, folks, we're trying to complete the meeting, so if you want to leave, please do so, and hold the conversations in the hallway. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry.
That's right. Mark Chetwind, 126 Palmer Mill Road. I'm a recently retired veteran of 32 years. I think it's time to just give back to the community. I've lived in Halifax since 2004, so I don't plan on going anywhere, so I'd like to throw my name in the ring.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions?
No, I want to thank him for, for serving the community, and I know we have Steve here.
Yeah, Steve, Mr. Littlefield, you want to come on up and just tell us your recommendation? My guess is, he wouldn't be here if you were recommending him.
Good evening. Steve Littlefield, 15 Franklin Street, Veteran Service Officer. I served with Mark for a long time in the Army National Guard. He's been in Halifax a long time. He helps out when, every time we've asked of him, he's, he's had a strong desire to do a little more, so when these openings came up on the committee, I, I, I called him up, and I said, hey, you want to be part of this, and he jumped right at it. So again, I think he'd be another great addition to the board.
Thank you. Okay, any comments?
I'll just, I thank you for your service and thank you for volunteering here. I think it's always noble when people like to give back, so thank you for both of those. I would like to make a motion to, let me see, nominate Mark Chetwind to the Veterans Services Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mark.
Unanimous. Congratulations. All right, let's finish up with the rest of the agenda. We have ambulance abatements.
Ambulance abatements, November 2024, for $117,915.15.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. ALS ambulance affiliation agreement. This is an annual.
Yeah, it's an annual requirement. This is our affiliation agreement with BID Plymouth for their medical director oversee kind of the physician aspect of our ambulance service. The agreement is unchanged, other than the dates.
Okay, so we just want us to approve it?
Yes.
So I would move that we approve the Advanced Life Support Ambulance Affiliation Agreement?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Representative for Regional Schools Study?
Yes, so Lauren Law is the chairman of the Elementary School Committee, just mentioned previously in the meeting. We, at the request of the School Committee, we applied for an efficiency and regionalization grant. We were awarded that grant, $125,000. Upon our non-compliance with the MBTA zoning law, we quickly, I quickly reached out to the town administrator in Kingston to see if they would take that grant from us, so it wouldn't be lost funding. They graciously took that grant, so they, Kingston is now the recipient of that, but it's to pursue a study, just to look at regionalization. Again, all it is is a study. It's not costing us anything, but with that, we'd like to put together a little communication committee. So we are asking that a member of the Finance Committee, a member of the Board of Selectmen from each community take part in that, so we're looking for one of you guys to serve as a representative.
John, I am the school liaison. I will gladly step forward if the board sees fit.
You've also got kids in high school.
Yeah.
Do you want us to make a motion for that?
Yes.
All right. I will make a motion that Mr. Seelig be the representative for Regional Schools Study.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Keno monitoring. I don't think I've ever handled one of these before.
No, so this is just a notification from the State Lottery Commission, there are, that there are two keno monitors planning to go in at Twin Lakes Liquors and Halifax cigar and smoke. So you don't need to approve it. It's just a notification, and if you were against it, you could send a letter letting them know that you did not approve, that you didn't, you would not like them to move forward with it. So as long as you're okay with it, you don't need to do anything. Just, you know, the, the little, the TV screens that have the keno games on them.
Is there a downside? People's loitering in the stores?
I don't think we get any, any percentages off of that.
So we don't get a exact percentage. The state, the Lottery Commission is what funds unrestricted government aid historically, so that money technically comes back to the town through, but it's not a direct.
Yeah, it's certainly not direct.
Discretion of the state legislature.
Correct, yeah.
You, speaking of letters, this reminds me, and I apologize, I meant to say this on the MBTA thing, but the public comment period is now open on the new regulations. Anyone's watching our meeting, and you have a strong opinion about the MBTA housing, I urge you to catch on that website and just send the public comments. One of the things that we heard in our last round of all of this was that there was supposedly a public comment period. We weren't involved, so I don't, I don't, I never heard of it, and no one ever objected to it. If you have an objection to it, this is the time to do it so that they know it. And I would also suggest to the board that we asked our town administrator to fill out that form, indicating to the MBTA that this town doesn't agree with that.
And that's, and that would be sufficient comment on our public, that would be our board position, and we would be separately be able to comment publicly.
Oh, absolutely, good, yeah. There's a website. My, my wife was doing it.
I've seen it. I'm just, we can, we can double down separate from Cody's comments, okay.
So are you good with that?
Yeah, I'll draft a letter and send it to you, and then I'll submit it.
Okay. I think you can attach it to the web, to the.
Yeah, we, we actually posted the link on our town page, so residents can see it. It's right under News and Announcement. It says MBTA Communities Act, Public Comments Now Being Accepted. And that's, that's not public comments coming to the town. That's public comments to the state about those regulations.
And again, the, the Board of Selectmen doesn't make these laws. We don't have anything to do with them. It's the state legislature that does it, or the, or the, in this case, one of those finance, one of those subcommittees that handle it. So I think it has to be clearly expressed to the people that might make a difference, including our state representatives and state senators, which we've been trying to get them to listen to us for three years now, so, all right. Okay, so town administrators update?
Yes, so a few things. Jean Galant, our longtime library director, has announced she'll be retiring in May, so Jean is left.
Eat it out of here, too. She was here five minutes ago.
So we'll, we'll certainly have Jean in at a future meeting to recognize her for her service. I met with the Library Board of Trustees recently. We've developed a process and timeline for the recruitment of that position, so that'll be a position that we will be seeking approval from the Board of Selectmen, given the new hiring freeze. We certainly won't have that in place by March 1st, but that's, that'll be an essential position to, to lead the library.
Yeah, it will.
So we will, like I said, have Jean in the future. Our FY '24 audit is currently ongoing. Kudos to our finance team, Linda McCarthy, our treasure collector, and Lindsay Martinelli, our town accountant, providing all of the information they needed. It's a laborious task, so thank you for doing that. We're continuing to push through the audit. There's a lot of good things going on at the library, so I recommend checking out their website. One of the interesting things was, they're gonna be hosting a session on the geology of Halifax, where a professor comes in and gives some history and some information on the current geology, and to entice people to get out there, they'll give everyone a free rock from Halifax at this session.
I was gonna say, don't do that right before a selectman meeting, please.
And there's also a couple authors upcoming at the library that are going to be discussing their books, so take a look at their website as well. Our Government Study Committee is continuing to meet, is planning some upcoming meetings with various departments, boards, committees to understand the current structure and operation of the town. Zoning by Law Review Committee is going to look to meet within the next week or two, finalize their recommendations to send to the Planning Board of the zoning changes. We'll also look to have some public hearings and workshops in, in March and April on those, and just preparing for town meeting as best we can.
What to do with this?
That's just your signature, doesn't need to prove.
We'll have to, the only thing with the board?
No, okay.
All right, anything else to come before the board? I think, yes.
Amy Troop, Ten Hills High Ave. So there is a large employment advertisement that went out today for an assistant library director. Have we ever had an assistant library director before?
An assistant library director hosting?
That was for Jean.
No, we're recruiting a library director.
So it's for her replacement in May?
Jean's job.
Okay, because we're talking about that, that the freeze would, you know, wouldn't include a $90,000 position that was put out on advertisement today.
So every position's included in the freeze, as just voted by the board, and they'll be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for approval by the board to, to hire, so that position